Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Boy, didn't that sound great?
Yes, it did. As it used to. Of course it does. Roll call Kathleen.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambo.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
All right. First on the agenda tonight, we're going to try to roll downhill and we'll appreciate everybody's cooperation tonight. As you know, this is a council meeting, so that you do have the right to speak, but we're going to ask that you, I know you guys know the rules, I'm just going to remind you, raise your hand, wait till your call's done, please. If you want to have some side conversations, you're welcome to do that, just please do it outside, not inside here, because we're trying to take care of business, you know what I mean? All right, you guys are lovely. All right, first, we do have a Mayor's Award tonight, and this award, I wish I could give out a couple different awards, just because this person has done so much for Burlington and over the last, over the last year. If you could see all the work that she has done behind the scenes, you all would be as proud of her as I am. And she also got a new last name, so I'm really proud of her about that. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, hard work, never die mentality, your desire to win, your commitment to excellence, your ingenuity during Fireball Run, and your new last name helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November 6, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Chelsea La Rib... Yeah, how do you say that last name? Whatever. But anyways. No, that's awesome, Chelsea, and I'll tell you, you are, you've been a blessing to Burlington, and we are, we're just so blessed to have you, even though you changed your last name. Let me give you one of these, I know you've got one. Give you one, anyways. Can I, yeah, can I get a picture, picture of you? Where are we doing this?
I don't know. Here, take it off. I just want to thank you, all as council, for your support on Fireball Run. It was definitely a community initiative, community project, and it meant a lot to have your support. I'll be here next week giving my biannual CBB update, so we'll share more next week, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
I also tonight have two MacGyver Awards. During the Fireball Run process, when we were coming back to Burlington, there were a lot of things that needed to be done, and you don't know what's going on or what to expect when you go into something like that, because we've never done anything like that before. But coming into town, I was getting fireballers and different people and producers saying, "Hey, we need this done, we gotta have this, this isn't done," so I had to rely on a lot of people. One guy called, I called him at the last minute, there was two people that I called at the last minute, I said, "Hey, I gotta have this," and I just pretty much just laid it in their lap, and they both, their response was, "I'm on it." And I'm really, really proud to have this guy working for the City of Burlington. He's a jerk sometimes, but we love him. So, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to present you with a Mayor's MacGyver Award. Angus MacGyver was known for having the ability to deactivate a bomb with a piece of chewing gum and a paperclip. Your expertise was needed during the Fireball Run Adventure Rally, and you came through without hesitation. On November 6, 2017, this Mayor's MacGyver Award is presented to Nick McGregor. Come on down. I told Nick, I said, "I'm giving you an award," and he's like, "Well, I really didn't do that much. Dude, you were there when I needed you," and that means a lot. Let me put this on here. Where'd we get you from? You got stuff, bro. Have a word with him.
I appreciate the award, you'll probably be seeing me talk a little bit more tonight, so I'll save it for that.
Okay, sounds good. Did he already mention that he was a jerk? I think I said that already. Okay, this next one, I was really going to give her a hard time, there was, I kept thinking, man, she came through for me in such a big way. I had a person that needed a, not a dentist appointment, but a...
Orthodontist.
Orthodontist appointment, needed something cut off their braces, I needed computers fixed, I needed cars fixed, I needed all kinds of stuff, and I needed 50 billion things, I knew one number that I could call to get it all done, and it was Kathleen Salisbury. I actually had some words to a song, I was thinking, what can I do to make this special for her? Do you guys remember a song back in the day by Anne Murray, "You Needed Me"?
Yeah.
I cried a tear. All right, I won't, I won't get a dollar of that. But anyways, Kathleen, what a blessing it is to have you, and again, you did it all, my friend, and everybody, they were all, they said, whoever that lady was that took care of that, they said, "We need to have one in our city." So, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to present you with this Mayor's MacGyver Award. Angus MacGyver was known for having the ability to deactivate a bomb with a piece of chewing gum and a paperclip. Coming into Burlington from the Fireball Run, I had a million requests, a million things to do, and one person I knew could do it, that'd be you. You did it for me and for the City of Burlington. On November 6, 2017, this Mayor's MacGyver Award is presented to Kathleen Salisbury. You're a rock star, my friend. I cried a tear, you wiped it dry. That's right, we're rolling. Now you're going to have to pause that. Let me give you one of these. I know, I joke a little bit, but I'm really, really serious. You came through in a big way, and you helped make this special, couldn't have done without you. I appreciate you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture with you, so I can build up your street cred. Would you please have a word?
I have notes. I wanted to thank Shoe Pick Automotive, Drake Hardware Software, and Smile Shop for our last-minute appointments the morning of, for that afternoon, and every day is actually adventure with the mayor. Thanks.
I don't like the way you said that, I want to have that removed. Okay. Next, we have one more award, and then we'll get down to the ugly stuff, but it's so awesome to be able to have some good things to celebrate as well. We're celebrating 35 years Teresa Norton. So, it's my pleasure to read this and to give her this award and a bracelet, and an extra piece of candy if she would like. Certificate of Recognition and Grateful Recognition of 35 Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Burlington, woo! As of September 2, 2017, we hereby present Teresa Norton with the Certificate of Recognition, signed Chaney McCambo, Mayor, 35 years of service. Come on down. Nobody wants my candy? Okay, well, take my bracelet, then.
I'll take the bracelet.
Take my bracelet, okay. And let me give you this, 35 years. You're awesome.
I'm not done.
What's this guy doing over me? I don't know. Well, just a media player. 35 years, Tony, would you please have a word and take as long as you'd like?
35 years is going to be a quick word.
Well, have your quick word, please, we appreciate it. Can we clap for her one more time?
I do thank you very much for this award, it means a lot to me, and just real quickly, I just want to say that I have been and will continue to be very honored and very pleased to work for the City of Burlington, I couldn't work with or for better people. Thank you very much.
If there's anybody here that has received an award, you can definitely leave now if you'd like to, except for Nick. All right.
And Kathleen.
And Kathleen. Okay, next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and if a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have a lot of resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving refund of beer license for Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 1241. The third is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2017 Seal Coat Streets Reconstruction. The fourth is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the Flint River Trail Phase 1 South. The fifth is a resolution approving purchase of eight used flatbed trailers for flood wall mitigation project. The sixth is a resolution approving purchase of eight used flatbed tra... I already read that one. The sixth is a resolution approving contract for services with Geoforestry, Inc., for timber listing and timber sale on Otter Island. Seventh is a resolution approving engineering services agreement between the City of Burlington and Beanstrand Chem, Inc. of Moline, Illinois, for professional engineering services for Phase 6 of the flood mitigation project in the City of Burlington, Iowa. The eighth is a resolution approving purchasing policies and procedures. The ninth is a resolution approving contract for real estate services with Terrace Real Estate Group, LLC, for marketing and selling the Burlington Police Department facility located at 424 North 3rd Street. The 10th is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Valley Street. The 11th is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Melrose Court. The 12th is a resolution approving an amendment of access agreement with Max Convenience Stores, LLC, for granting access to the subject premises for the purpose of locating a remediation station and conducting environmental investigation and remediation work. We also have some public hearings set for the 20th of 2017. The first is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street right-of-way located between Valley Street and Market Street, Burlington, Iowa. And then the second is a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire for Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire Drivers in its entirety. And we also have some appointments from your pro temp.
Two appointments, Water Works Board of Trustees, John Hart, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Laura Blanchard. And thank you for serving.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? Leon Shahean.
Who bet you? Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, item number 7, for the engineering services.
Mr. Scott.
Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th, number 6 and number 9, please.
Anybody else? Okay, council?
Your Honor, I move to approve of all items on the consent agenda except for 6, 7, and 9.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 255 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions publication as to be in the Hawkeye as prescribed. Mr. Tisland.
This is a vacant lot located on west side of Central Avenue between Etna and Elm Street. We have had bids submitted by the property owners to the north and to the south. Diane Herman owns property 259 South Central, and Mohammed Naruzi with Siena Enterprises on the 253 South Central. This lot, the conditions of sale are combine the lot with an adjacent lot under ownership that has an existing house within 30 days of sale by the City of Burlington, or apply for and receive building permit within 60 days and construct a single-family home within 180 days of approval of sale. Both bidders do own property and have a house adjacent to it. Ms. Herman has bid $500, Mohammed has bid on multiple properties and would like requested to split the 500 between the property at 251 and 255. So, it'd be 250 each on each of those lots.
Okay. All right, so we have two bidders on this, Diane Herman and Mohammed. This is 255 South Central. This is a beautiful lot, the grass is so much greener in this lot than it is on any other lot in Burlington. I need to quit fibbing like that. Okay, is there anybody down here, we're going to open up this auction, is there anybody down here that is not listed that would like to make a bid on this property? I see none. Mohammed, would you like to give more than 250 each?
Actually, I wanted to lower it, because nobody else was.
I shouldn't have asked him that, you've got some kind of attitude. Okay, am I misunderstanding that wrong? Am I misunderstanding that, that they decided to both go in on this?
Yeah, to each acquire half, Mohammed on the north half and Diane Herman on the south half.
I think we've got a, I think we've got a, don't we have it set that it has to be a $500 minimum, though?
It's the recommended minimum.
You're bidding a total of 500 for the two, for both halves?
Yeah.
No, I was, to answer his question, he was saying he wanted to get it lowered, but we have it set up, that's a, it's a base that has to be at least 500, don't we have that set up?
It's a prerogative, but you, yeah, you set a 500 bid, and we talked about it last time, and you didn't choose to make any changes to that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was, that was clear. Okay, no other bids? Going once? Going twice? Yes?
I have a question, if you bid on that property, you have to put up a dollar?
Can I have you, come up here? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Robin Young, and I live at 263 South Central for the last 27 years. So, I'm quite familiar with this lot. The property, Mohammed, I don't have a problem buying that lot, because he seems to be using it, going to use it for good purpose. My neighbors to the north of me, 259, I do have a problem, because she is bidding on it, she doesn't live there, she is renting it to someone, and he's not using it the way constructively. So, if I, I was told that I could not bid on it, because I'm not going to put a house on it.
Eric, could you, could you give her the details of it again, please?
Our conditions of sale, and these are conditions we've stated with the sale, was that adjacent property owner purchase it and combine it with their lot, or our code required does not allow just a garage or no structure on a lot without a house, so we state that they do have to build a house on the lot if they want to bid on it, so either combine it with their existing lot or build a house on it.
Which I can't do, because I don't live, I just live two houses down.
Right.
And no one's going to build a house on it with gasoline running underneath the ground because of the breakage of the gas station. So, would you consider me buying it, even though, what I was told by Charlie Nichols is usually you do not let a person that's adjoined to it, because it's hard to come after them if they're not kept up to it, the property. Well, since I've lived at my location for 28 years, I would like to know if I could considerably buy it for a much higher price than the 250 or 500 that they're considering.
I think you'd, I don't know if you'd have to go through a re-process of doing a public hearing to do that. You typically have not gone that route, that's not been the recommended route from staff, for one, but you haven't chosen to go that route either. If you wanted to go through that, Eric, am I, am I correct, if you change the, the, those kind of requirements, you'd have to start over again?
We'd want to list it again, just because those were the conditions, and we've had those conditions, people in the past have wanted to put up a garage or parking on a lot, which our zoning code doesn't allow, like a garage or parking on a lot that's not on your own lot, it'd be either a parking lot or a storage building, so that's the reason, part of the reason why we have this condition for adjacent neighbors. I don't know if she has plans for the lot, or...
No, I don't. I just don't want it used presently as the way it's using, as a dog run and as a parking lot. We have too many in the neighborhood, in that neighborhood, there is six empty lots, and they're not being used. I just didn't want another one being used that way. I named four lane.
So...
I would like to know if I can put a bid in it, even though I don't live adjacent, because you only have two properties that are adjacent, and...
I would not be in favor of changing. I don't think you can put a, for, unless you're going to follow the prerequisites that are listed here, you can't put a bid on it by other standards. Now, the council, you could determine you don't want to sell it and redo it, start the process over if you're willing to look at different alternatives, but that's where the options are.
I think we open up a huge can of worms if we start doing this, because then you're going to have other people wanting to buy vacant lots, and then what are you going to get? I can't see that.
Anybody else have anything they want to? What's, what's your name again?
Robin Young.
And, you're 263?
Mm-hmm, and I've been trying to buy this lot for years, and no one has allowed me to. They kept on saying it was green space, the other ones on the corner were green space at 251, and now, all of a sudden, everyone's interested in it, and it's being sold.
I don't understand that, why couldn't, why was she told she couldn't buy?
I don't know why anyone would have been told anything in the past, but the, the lot is, I mean, you have the terms set for you right now, if you don't want to follow through with that, you can start the process over, if you want to do something different. Otherwise, the terms that you have are the terms that you're selling it by.
Are, where are you guys at? Are you wanting to, you guys agree pretty much with Jim, or any other?
Yeah, I think it kind of, it can create an issue, unfortunately, with our, our future sales on lots like this. Not saying that you would, you know, neglect or abuse this if you bought it, but unfortunately, I just don't think we can start doing that. I mean, if you wanted to buy it and build a house on it, obviously.
No, it's at the 200 block of South Central, I don't think anyone's going to buy that lot and put a house on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, hon.
Okay.
But, but thank you for coming down.
No, I don't have a problem.
I understand what you're saying, you know, it's not like it doesn't have merit, I understand what you're saying, but that's what we've got to do.
And the only other comment is that there is always been a minimum of $500 bid, so I, I'm a stickler for that. I bought my lot next to it on the corner, put a fence around it for 500, because no one objected. Well, you have people that are interested in it, so I think at least it shouldn't be that or higher. So...
Right on, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Okay. No other comments from the audience? We're going to close this auction up.
I move to close the public hearing.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the sale of property locally known as 255 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Your Honor, I move to amend, that the north half of the lot is described in Exhibit A shall be sold to Siena Enterprises Mohammed Naruzi for $250. The south half of the lot is described in Exhibit A shall be sold to Diane Herman for $250.
Thank you, moving second. All right, Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson. Aye.
As amended?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Okay, well done. Okay, this is time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 251 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
Same conditions as prior, combined with an adjacent lot under their ownership within 30 days, or apply for and receive a building permit for construction of a single-family home on the property. This, again, is a vacant lot, this is a relatively small lot by our current standards, smaller than typical. We do have one offer from Mohammed Naruzi, again, he had mentioned 250 between the two lots, but obviously up to council for that.
Okay. We're, we're going to open up this bid, is there anybody else from the audience, or we're going to open up this auction? Anybody else from the audience that would like to make a bid on this property with the stipulations that are laid out? I see none? Okay. Then we're going to move forward and sell this property to...
The price, what's the bid on it, then, Eric?
Originally, it was 250.
And are you willing to sell it for the 250, or are you wanting the 500?
We're wanting the 500.
The lot is a 40 by 60-foot lot, which is well under, I guess that was the basis for it, well under what our standard lot size is.
Yeah, I gave Mohammed two pieces of candy, that's... Yeah, I thought we set, I thought we set that up, that we weren't, we weren't going to go any lower than $500 on, on any property. So, do we have a bid of $500? This is 251 South Central, the vacant lot. What'd he say?
Yes.
Sounds like a plan. We've got a bid of $500? Are there any other bids on this property tonight? Have a bid of $500 going once? Going twice? Okay, sold to Mohammed Naruzi for $500.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I move to approve the sale of property locally known as 251 South Central, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
I move to amend Exhibit C of the Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 251 South Central, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Mohammed Naruzi, Burlington, Iowa, amount of $500.
Moved in second, thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Who did the second, sorry?
Bobby.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Okay, now, as amended?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, number three. This is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 506 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, and thank you, Mohammed.
Same conditions as prior, this is a vacant lot, we acquired the property through our abandoned building program, and house was in a condition that required demolition, that was done over the summer. We did contact both adjacent property owners and sent out notice to properties within 200 feet. Mohammed did submit a bid for $500 on this property to combine and expand the lot size of 508 South Gunnison.
Okay, we're going to get this party started, is there, is there anybody from the audience that has another bid on this property that would like to make a bid greater than $500? Is there one? I see none? Mohammed, would you like to give more money? Okay, we have a bid of $500. Going once? Going twice? Okay, property sold to Mohammed Naruzi.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I move to approve the sale of property locally known as 506 South Gunnison, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Move to amend Exhibit C of the Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 506 Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Property be sold to Mohammed Noorzi for $500.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Now as amended?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use of potable water source. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. In front of you is an ordinance to, is an amendment to the ordinance for potable wells. However, the section that's being amended is for the non-potable wells, potable wells. As you can see up over on the overhead projector is a map of the areas of the boundary described in the ordinance change. It's the former BNSF, or it's the current BNSF site where there's a former monitoring site there. In order to comply with DNR standards, they will prohibit non-potable wells or non-drinking water wells from being constructed in that boundaried area.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you, Nick.
Any comments, questions, or concerns from the audience? Nick, that's when you know you've done a good job. Counsel? We're good?
Motion to close. Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Kathleen, let's handle it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. Number five. Consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
This came forward as a request from the Riverfront Advisory Committee to consider making some modifications to the composition of the committee. The ordinance change that's in front of you would change the membership from nine to five. We've been, we're currently, I think, three positions under, on that committee. We're sitting at six, so this, we are, our, the number of volunteers on that board are a little bit, are over what this would change it to, but we do have either one or two terms that expire in February this next year, so the timing works pretty well for getting this change made at this point. It also changes my, my role as ex officio to be in the park superintendent or designee. The park superintendent is an individual who is from staff, who has been attending these meetings over the last several years and has, puts it into that position and makes sense. The park superintendent is over that area. There is also an additional change as, one of the things that the council had wanted to see as we moved through the process of looking at our different committees is adding some language within there about having an annual update to the council. So this codifies that perspect, that issue as well.
Sounds good. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? Counsel?
On air.
Works for me.
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Well done. Resolutions?
Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the north side of the 1500 block of Sioux Street in its entirety.
Mr. McGregor?
This resol-
Second.
Thank you.
This resolution will create a no parking zone on the north half of Sioux Street. This area was discussed recently. From a previous request, this is a different request coming in from a different property owner on a no parking zone. Previously installed, you can see on the red, it was reflective on the north half was, I think it was 30 foot east of the driveways was a no parking zone. This request is for no parking on the north half. After speaking with the fire department for public safety, it's a little tight to get in there and then back out with an ambulance or a fire truck. Based on that, it probably isn't the best interest to make no parking on the north side.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? Counsel?
No.
Kathleen, let's do this.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and American Music Festival.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
With the termination of the VenueWorks contract as of the end of December, the council had several different thoughts to go through in terms of what to do for management of the facility. Through those discussions, we came to this proposed agreement with American Music Festival. The term of the agreement is a three-year contract beginning January 1 of 2018. Has an automatic renewal written into it if the parties are willing to let it so, so transpire. Other terms that are in here of note, AMF would be contracting with Burlington Steamboat Days for alcohol provision and then would be responsible for ensuring that they, that they perform that service in a responsible manner on behalf of the city. Steamboat Days currently does provide services for the port and some of the areas adjacent to that. This expands, as the whole agreement does, that provision of services to cover all three of the riverfront properties, the port, the auditorium, and the depot. There is a provision in here that asks AMF to be able to, to report their financial conditions to the city on a quarterly or possibly semi-annual basis if that's, if we're agreeable to that, but it also has a provision in there based off of the conversations that we had at the last meeting that they make an annual report to the city. Within responsibilities, the city would be responsible for the payment of utilities, which is one of the things that had been talked about. We'd be providing to AMF $250,000 annually, $125,000 each six months. And with the beginning of this contract, we'd be providing up, an upfront $35,000 as well for some of their upfront costs and upgrades to the properties. There's a, terms in here that provide for the distribution of rentals, legacy events that have been held. The city would get the lease fees, 100% of the lease fees from those. Non-legacy or new rentals and events down there, the city would receive 20% of the net proceeds while AMF would get 80%. One of the things that's contemplated by AMF is that they would seek naming rights for rooms for events that occur down at the facility. The terms here for naming rights and advertisements would be divided in that, in the same formula as non-legacy events, 20% to the city, 80% to AMF. It provides a, a level of us having the ability to ensure that there, that we have some oversight on what the naming, naming rights given are to ensure that there isn't something that we're not in agreement with. Other terms that are in here, there is, already covered record keeping. Contingency regarding change of use, given that this has an automatic renewal and the council has had at least some discussions about what happens with that property long term, this does recognize that the city may choose at some point in the future to have an alternative use of that site or maybe a modified facility down in the area of the auditorium. Given that there is a notice provision that's written in here after the first three years, if this is an automatic renewal on this contract, we do have the right to, with 120 days' notice to terminate the agreement if that's, if we're fundamentally changing the use of that structure down there. Something that had also come up as we thought of, talked about are, there's a section in here for existing and contemplated tenants. We have some long-term tenants of the properties. The Iowa Store is an example. At the deep, at the port, at the depot, we have potentially contracts for use of facilities that have at least been discussed, one with Amtrak and one with a potential restaurant. And it gives the same thought process to what might happen with the development of the southern end of that structure. If we end up with long-term tenants, those would not be subject to a revenue split, they'd be separate from that. And in fact, the agreements that we've talked about down at the depot, we've looked at as if we do a lease of facilities, there'd be some, most likely some CAM charges and we'd cover the maintenance of that through those CAM charges. The agreement also provides the city with at least one representative on the AMF board, whether that's a staff person and/or council mayor representative. And you'll also see a division of right, of responsibilities for maintenance and daily cleaning of the facilities. Most of the, the majority of the maintenance tasks are, reside with the city. Daily cleaning of the auditorium resides with AMF. With the port and the depot, there is a split on, on the cleaning responsibilities depending on the nature of the type of events that are there. The day-to-day usage of the facility based on our long-term leases, we recognize that we have a, a level of maintenance on, whereas special events, there's a level of maintenance required from AMF as operator of the facility. And I think that kind of covered as much as I can out of that agreement.
That rarely happens to me.
You're touched by what I said, aren't you?
I'm so moved! Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Yes, sir, you in the back. Mr. Elmer? Wow.
Mike Elmer, 620 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa. Taxpayer here in Burlington. This deal, in my opinion, is a bad deal for the taxpayers of Burlington. Just in the raw cost of the three-year agreement and utility bills, we're looking at $989,000, which does not include the 81 or 8,500 that's being forgiven of Burlington Steamboat Days. This group is being given a three-year agreement on the backs of us as a taxpayer. Over the last three years, they have continually shown the inability to be successful. Several years ago, they had a very large bank account. Now they're asking that their $8,500 or 81, whatever it was from last year that was reduced from last year, be forgiven as part of this deal. And they're asking us to trust in them that they will make this work. I've had people ask me as a taxpayer, if you're gonna raise taxes and we're gonna spend this money on Burlington Steamboat Days AMF, is there at least gonna be something down there that their children can go enjoy? I remember Steamboat Days in its, in its glory days, where it lined the riverfront and people went down there and spent all day, every day for the entire event. That's not what it's become and it's not what it is. And we're putting a lot of faith in a group that has shown that they haven't been successful. And as a taxpayer, I know within this three-year period, we're gonna have firefighters that had to be paid for. I know that we have police officers that need to be hired. And I have sat and listened to this council say, "We don't know what else to do, so we're gonna do this." As a taxpayer, that disappoints me. As a citizen of Burlington, it disappoints me. At one point, it was brought up that we could run this auditorium at a minimum of $160,000 a year, which is substantially less than what this agreement costs. We had Mike O'Neill come up here and make an offer to the city that was substantially less than this. Then we had AMF grab Mike and bring him into the team and the price went up. We're not talking about the operating cost on top of this. This is a million-dollar price tag to the taxpayers of Burlington with no guarantees that anything's gonna happen. As a taxpayer, I'd be much happier to see a one-year agreement, give these people an opportunity to show that they can do something other than just say they're gonna be successful and if so, reward them with additional years of agreements. But to just go into this with a million dollars of our taxpayer money and say, "Good luck, we hope for the best," that's not very encouraging. And I would ask the council to reconsider this and look at other options, even if it's a reduced term on the agreement with AMF. So that's what I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Scott?
Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th. Number five says, "All AMF-produced events, including Steamboat Days, shall not be charged a rental fee." Can you explain that a little further? I mean, if, if they have a comedian come in and they're producing it, there's no rental fee, so there's no collection by the cities?
They're not, if they have a rent, a comedian come in, they're not producing it. That's, that's not their production. That would be a rental that would be split by the formula on the net proceeds from it.
What, what would be AMF producing?
The only thing that we have that currently meets those terms is the, the main space rental. Now, I don't know if you have any contemplated thoughts from the AMF side on produced events that would meet those qualifications, but all the events that we have, have had a discussion on fall under the realm of a revenue split in terms of bringing in an act from, from outside.
Okay. Is Burlington Steamboat Days not considered a legacy event?
From the, the time that this was brought forward, as AMF brought their proposal, one of their requests as part of it, to, to do this was to see that fee, that rental charge dropped or waived, which has been accommodated in here. That was not something that the council necessarily had to, to go along with, but they have chosen to go along with it at this point. You, you're correct. It would have been a legacy event otherwise.
All right. It's, it appears to be more costly than what the 250,000 and the 35,000 would seem to be when you start adding all those things in and the loss of income from probably the key legacy event in Burlington. My, I think the, the plan is right. I think the numbers are wrong. I think that we're looking more at the salvation of Steamboat Days than we are looking at the value to the taxpayers. And that, that concerns me greatly. At, at the same time, I appreciate the people that are, are stepping up and, and willing to take this on. I just don't know that in the end, that our taxpayers are gonna see any value. And I, I hope that, that when the numbers come in, counsel, that you look at them very, very hard, that, that first reporting period and take appropriate action to eliminate a, an additional year beyond this one of any losses or congratulate them and, and encourage them to move forward if they are successful. But as it stands right now, it's, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with, with giving this kind of money away to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaheen? You wore my favorite jacket.
Yes, I did.
I love that.
New black. Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Well, hell probably froze over, but Tim Scott and I agree for one. My concerns about this, as an investor and as an accountant, I don't think due diligence has been done here. AMF is affiliated with a summer musical festival. These music festivals have not been doing well lately. Before you entered into this agreement and go forward with it, has there been any due diligence that they can actually carry forward? Do they have the funds to do what they're promising to do? I think really what this sounds like to me is we're subsidizing Burlington Steamboat I think really what this sounds like to me is we're subsidizing Burlington Steamboat Days in a roundabout fashion. I haven't seen the numbers from AMF and Burlington Steamboat Days, but I do know the festivals aren't doing well. And I, I think this is just a backdoor way to subsidize that.
Thank you, Leon.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Williams, and then I'll get you.
Larry Williams, 1567 Mason Lane. I think you should go ahead. I don't like the automatic renewal part, and I think you ought to scrutinize it every year to make sure that the deficit's going down. If we don't see the deficit going down, then we got to figure it out, because in the long run, $400,000 a year we're losing, we've got to, we've got to do something about that.
Exactly.
And so it's got to, for the new council, it's, it's got to go down every year. And if it's not doing that, then, you know, maybe we need to build a high-rise hotel there or something, but whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you, Mr. Williams. I'm going to get to you, hold on. Bishop Junior, I'm going to get to you, but let me, let me get that young lady in the back, please. She had her hand up first. Okay.
My name is Rebecca Rosales. I live at 102 Melrose Court. The only issue I've been seeing with the American Music Festival is somebody had posted online the last one that they had here in town, and tickets were $35 apiece. There are, half these people in town cannot afford $35 apiece. So if you want to bring something there that's going to bring in money, you have to bring in something people like, for one, and two, you can't have tickets that high. I mean, I don't think the place was packed that day. Not many people commented that they were there, but that's just my opinion. The price has to be lower, and it's got to be something that everybody's going to enjoy. You know, not just one genre of music, you know? It's got to be something everybody likes, and it's got to be lower-priced.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Fleming? Oh, you know what? I'll save you, just sit on down. I'm getting you, you get your exercise. You didn't want candy, Mr. Kreitzer, and then, and then I'll, I'll let you come, Mr. Fleming.
Robert Kreitzer, 810 North Fifth. I listened to you guys talk about it the last time, and I think that Steamboat Days and AMF had a pretty good proposal. I think giving them three years is a little premature. I actually agree with Mike Elmer. I think a year would be a good start, and we can back out after 180 days. Like, we can give them 180 days notice if it's not working for us. Is that correct? Is that what that was, Mr. Farnum?
You have two different provisions. One, at the beginning, it's a four cause. That's, I think, 120 days. I'm going off my memory on that. The other one, after the first three years, the way it's written, 120-day notice if there's a significant change in the use of the facilities.
Okay. Well, again, I, I think three years is a little much starting out. I think a year would probably be more appropriate and see how it's going. Obviously, we can renew. Mr. Davidson, you asked him, like, how can Burlington make money on this deal? And Mr. Burkhardt said, "I think what you mean is how can we lose less?" So I, I do believe that they can do this. I think their enthusiasm, I think they can pull this off. I think it would be good for Burlington, but I am concerned at how much it would cost us if they don't. And that's why I really think we should roll out with a year. If they can bring in acts and shows and we're making money, I'm, I'm totally for it, and I'd like to give them a chance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else from the audience? Okay. Mr. Fleming?
Casey Fleming, 3606 Memorial Park Road, Burlington, Iowa. Bishop Junior.
That's right.
I appreciate everybody's thoughts and concerns, and they are things that we have thought about ourselves. And Steamboat Days and the American Music Festival, I just want to make clear that they are definitely separate. While there's a relationship, it is separate. And separate board, separate people, there is some overlap. There will be some Steamboat Days folks on that board to, to provide commentary and stuff. And, and if the AMF is, is successful, does that help Steamboat Days financially? The answer is yes. That's definitely part of the deal. Steamboat Days would get the liquor license back in those three buildings, which they have had in the port for decades, had in the Memorial Auditorium prior to that for decades. And they would just like to get that back with their 30-plus volunteers to be able to do that at a more profitable level than, than other agencies that don't have 31 part-time employees looking to volunteer time on nights and weekends. So, so that's, that's the benefit for Steamboat Days. And, and ultimately, it is a separate deal. You know, this is about those three buildings. It's about the history of Burlington and the auditorium, the Port of Burlington. It was, Port of Burlington sat in decay and empty for a long time until a group of folks came and, and brought it back to life. And while this is different, I think it's, it's time to, to press forward and do this for the right reasons, which is to keep the riverfront going, which is the focal point of our community. And two, hopefully, to, to lose less money. I mean, are we ever going to make money? I don't know. We, we have looked at a model in a similar-sized community that, that does break even. That's our goal, at least. And we, we've done pro formas to be able to show that there is revenue streams. Is it enough revenue to, to drive a net, net, net profit? Maybe. But if we don't try, there's absolutely no possibility of ever make, or at least not in the near future, making a net profit. There's an event in there, that, January 5th, and, and there's people calling, wanting to rent these buildings, calling us right now. And we don't have an answer until we hopefully get the yes votes and are able to move forward. In the three years, totally understand that as well. I hire people for a living. I recruit people for a living. And while it's, it, it does take some trust and people's belief to say, "Yeah, I'll come and, and give it a shot on a one-year deal." It's tough to do anything in 12 months. You can't book an act worth its weight in, in, in three to six months at best. So, so basically, if we just had a year, which we looked at, it's like, is it one year? Is it two years? Is it three years? And the models that we went out and looked at, other communities that have done this, you, you need those three years. You need a year to book year two. You know, you're going to, you know, you're going to have to turn it in six to eight months, get moving forward after the completion of that first year, and then it's year two where you really turn the corner and get going downhill, and hopefully take the subsidy and shrink it. How low can we shrink it? $40,000, $60,000, $80,000 over those first three years? That's hopeful. On the high end, you know, 60, 80, 100, and beyond. So I hope that answers some of the concerns. And we've discussed all this before, so this is not anything new, I don't think, for, for you folks. But, but the most important thing for, for us as an organization, is it about helping Steamboat Days a little bit? Absolutely. Is it about helping the people of Burlington that, that? I, I've, I've had a few folks say, "I'm not sure if this is going to work." I've had 250 folks email, call, greet me personally and said, "This is awesome. I'm glad you guys are doing this, because if you don't know, I don't know. If you guys don't, I don't know who will." So it's about saving those buildings, moving forward, and capitalizing on our best asset, which is that riverfront. So I hope you'll consider a yes vote, and I don't know if you have any further questions for myself or any of our folks, but be happy to entertain those.
Questions, council?
Thank you, Casey.
Very good. Thank you. And I might add, too. Thank you for, for considering this. This has been a, a long and cumbersome road to even get this far. So, so thank you for your time and consideration up until this point. Appreciate it.
Didn't I just talk to that guy? Come on. I think I remember you.
Yeah, I was just here, so I'm not. What I heard was, "I hope, I wish." As a businessman, if I heard those kind of words, I would run for the hills. The bottom line is...
Be respectful, everybody.
I am being respectful. But the bottom line is, people that are hungry make things happen. At $250,000 a year, these people, and I don't mean to insult anybody, there is nothing there to make them hungry, to make it happen. And I also want to remind Mr. Fleming that he promised publicly to abstain from any vote on this.
Mr. Fleming's a good man. He's...
I know. But the bottom line is, I don't like words of hope and wish, and, and as a businessman, those are not encouraging words. And this is our money, a lot of it. There's a lot of places in this town that it could go, that are needed. So I really hope you consider this, because this is a million dollars, just base money. That's not counting the liquor and everything else that the city loses. It's not counting the operating costs. It's not counting replacement of the furnace and air conditioning if it goes out. It's not counting any of those things. This is just taxpayer money to say, "Somebody step in and hopefully make this work." Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Any comments before we...
I have a comment.
Please.
I'm ready to vote.
Well, you're not voting.
That was good.
Well, my comment is, I, you know, when I was on the council before, six years ago, this, this has always been out there, the amount of money that it costs to maintain that building. And, and I'm for saving old buildings, and I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this, but, but I want to say that, to me, I just have to be honest how I feel about it. This is like the last straw. I mean, there's been a lot of money put into that, year after year. We tried something different, and, and I look at how we could use that riverfront. If we had a hotel or something down there, it could go from a minus to a plus. We don't have anybody coming up, coming to us to do that. But, you know, if, if, if some, if the group did come, I, I think the city should seriously look at it. And I guess my challenge to you is, you know, if you, we give you that time, that I think you have to turn it around. You, you have to give us back more money, because if three years come and we're still not doing any better than this, I don't know why we just keep continuing and continuing. We need to get out and, and look at doing something different with that property and take it from a minus to a plus. So, you know, I, I think we've got a good group of people here that are willing to give it a chance, but, you know, I hate it that it's that much, but, but to let it set and, or, or for us to do it, it's still going to cost money. It's still going to cost money, and the building would probably fall more into neglect, I feel. But I do like it that, you know, if somebody did a purchase, I think we would be looking seriously at doing something, because there's a lot of people in the city that are, are tired of, I mean, they love the building and they like the idea of it, but there are a lot of people that don't use the building and don't like the idea that we're spending that money year after year. And if we could find something better use for that area that would bring in hotel motel tax, you know, that's, that's a big number to get rid of the minus and, and get a plus. So, so it's up to you guys to, to make that difference.
I want to say that it's the people that I believe in the most. You guys, I don't doubt, I don't doubt the group. And I know that you can say, "Well, Steamboat Days, they had a whole bunch of money, they don't have as much money." Good times, bad times, ups and downs, it happens, so I'm not, I'm not saying that. I believe, I believe you guys are a power squad. My thing is, I, I just wish the power squad would have been here three years ago. I have to look at the lessons learned also from VenueWorks, and that was three years that, well, I'll tell you, they, they really got us. My only issue was, I just want to just make this perfectly clear, it had nothing to do with, with the group or anything like that. My only issue was the three years. I, I just wasn't sure, not knowing what the future of our finances is going to look like if we've got three years to, to not be able to have that option to say, "Well, at the end of the year." Because, again, I, I want to say this, I believe in the staff of AMF. I believe in them. I'm just not sure if, I'm still not convinced if, if we have the market that we're trying to make a steak out of ice cream. I, I'm not sure if we have that or not yet. You know, we could have an issue where, it doesn't matter who it is, you know, Superman's not going to come in and make it work. We just don't know, but... So I just want to say that again, I, I want to make that perfectly clear. I think Bishop Junior, you're a winner, you're Mr. Burlington. I believe in you. The Burkhardts, you guys, you guys are, man, you know, don't get me started. So it has nothing to do with you guys. This, this has to do with looking at, looking at VenueWorks coming in. They came in and, for three years, and we've already been through all of that, and looking into the future, doing some forward thinking. That was the issue that I had. So I just want to make that perfectly clear. I heard somebody today say, "Well, you, you don't want AMF to do that?" "Oh, no, no, I, I want AMF to do this. I want AMF to make it work." Had some issues, though, with the three years that made me nervous, and the, the amount that made me nervous. I just want to make that perfectly clear before we go into the vote.
I'd have to agree. Say an amen to Becky. I've said this to you guys before. But as far, Mike, as far as if the furnace goes out, we're going to have to pay for the furnace whether AMF there or not. You know, it doesn't matter who's running the facility. If something goes bad, we have to fix it, so... That's, that's not an issue to me. To me, the whole thing comes down to, what do we decide we want to do with the building? Well, we didn't want to tear it down. We didn't want to close it. We didn't want to shutter it. We didn't run it by ourselves. So here's our option. So that's it for me.
Any other comments before we move forward?
Well, I think that if, you know, a lot of people want, not a lot of people, but there are a few people who say they want us to run it, because that was an option. I think that if the city were to run it, that there would be so many events that would suffer, you know, legacy community events that would suffer if it was just the city running it bare minimum. You know, with this, we have an opportunity to help the community thrive. All kinds of events that can bring the whole community together, and, you know, without this group, without AMF, it wouldn't happen. There are, there is no other place for these events to be held right now in this city besides, unfortunately, the auditorium. And we need somebody who is committed to this community, and I think AMF is that.
Okay. I'm going to, you stood up. Can I have you, can I have you come up here? We're going to take this comment, and then we're going to, we're going to vote. How are you doing tonight, sir?
I'm doing well. Mike McCullough, 826 North Third, Burlington. I've grown up under the understanding that compromise is a very worthy type of way to approach things. And I've heard people say, "Let's not do anything." Some people saying that, that we need to do something, and we certainly want to save a building that's there that has had some use and has, has nobody else offering to do anything for it. I've heard people saying, "How about not three years, one year?" I hear AMF say, "We need three years, but we can do some turnaround in six, six months to eight months. So what about a compromise of two years?"
Thank you, sir. I like the way you think. Counsel, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. Kathleen, let's get down to it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Because of my son's involvement, I'll abstain.
Reluctantly, no.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. Nice having you.
Thank you for your input, everybody.
No doubt. And everybody was very courteous. That's always, that's always welcome.
And go get them, AMF.
No doubt.
Don't let us down.
No doubt. Anybody can assist them, brother. All right. Next we have, oh, that's not me.
Oh, resolution. Yeah. We have a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Summer Street Edition subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, let's hold on one second.
They're going to go get started on it right now.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Let them step out here.
Yeah, we'll wait till, you bet.
Thanks, guys.
The mayor pro temp gave them all candy before the meeting, so they're a little hopped up right now. Thank you, Steph.
My name's Matt Johnson. I live at 119 Oak Street in Burlington. The proposal here is for 4752 Summer Street. It's approximately two miles south of the airport. Due to the city's two-mile review zone, it is located in the county. City has a two-mile review right, and this property is located inside of that. So the proposal's for five building lots fronted along Summer Street, be no streets or sewer infrastructure involved. They'll all use the infrastructure that's already there. It has been approved by the Des Moines County Board of Supervisors, so this is the last step in the process for us.
Thank you.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Just a note, this did go to the planning commission on October 24th. They voted 5-1 to recommend approval of the preliminary plat based on meeting the county standards, meeting minimum lot size, and minimizing driveways off of Summer Street. This is the preliminary plat. As you mentioned, this did get approved through the county process, so there is a resolution for the final plat following this as well if this is approved.
I'm sorry, is there another space? Are you good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No.
Okay, let's vote on it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Yes, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right.
I have a resolution approving the final plat of Summer Street Addition subdivision.
Second.
Moved in second.
As mentioned, uh, this was, uh, requested by the applicant to move, uh, through the process, uh, with the final plat as well. And again, the county has approved, uh, the final plat, uh, and signed off on those.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right, nice having. Number five.
Here I have a resolution awarding contracts for the 2017 Vineyard Street Area Drainage Program project.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McGregor?
Before you use a resolution approving, uh, the award for the contract for this Vineyard, uh, project, um, we went out to bid and the low bid was KNA Excavating at $273,794.98. Uh, the engineer's estimate was at $303,037.16, so it was under bid. Um, and the budget that we have is $313,000. Um, with engineering, it brings it just right underneath of it. So, staff recommends approval, uh, awarding bid to KNA Excavating.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
It's been, you know, I think, when I was on council before this started, they started presenting this, so it's kinda been a long time coming and...
Yeah, and it still has a little bit of time. That's looking at a spring construction cycle.
You may see some utility work happen yet this fall. Um, I think there's some gas lines that'll likely be in the way of where the ditching will happen. Um, but yes, this project will start in the spring.
From now on, you come up, I want you to say, uh, Nick McGregor, MacGyver's Award winner.
See what I can do.
Concerns? Anybody from the audience? I see none. You guys have been lovely tonight. Counsel?
That's all.
Okay. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, number six.
Here I have a resolution awarding contract for the Flint Hills Golf Course Pump House Project.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tison?
I did receive bids October 10th, uh, with the low bid from AC Contracting LLC from Key Cock at an amount of $119,699. Uh, the budget amount in the CIP was $120,000. Uh, this is for the, uh, pump house for the golf course, controls the irrigation system and controls, uh, very critical, uh, item at the golf course. Uh, the completion, uh, of this project is, uh, scheduled by March 15th of 2018.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Nice having. Number seven?
Here I have a resolution approving the five-year road plan for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. I'm sorry, who are you?
Uh, Nick McGrave, I was gonna say, I had it all planned too. I was gonna say Nick MacGyver and it didn't work out very well. If you could throw the overall map up first. Um, I'm gonna be presenting the, the five-year road plan. Um, I did some modific, modifications to the map from last week. Last week, we kind of showed you, um, all the projects that are happening, not all the ones that are being funded by this amount of money. I didn't wanna disproportionately what that amount of money was covering. Um, some of those are funded by, uh, different grants and different funding sources. Uh, so this is the five-year road plan. Oh, that's the wrong one, Eric. Just go to, just go right to 19. That way it doesn't get confused. Should be the yellow. So, uh, in front of you is the fiscal year, uh, 19, um, monies worth of roads. Uh, as you can see, which fortunately, yellow is a bad color. My city engineer is colorblind, so that doesn't really help. Uh, Flint Hills Drive is the major road that is, that is being taken care of. It's an overlay project, um, down by, um, Ed Stone School. It's Dill and I don't know the other street going north. Those are reconstructs. Those are some fairly old concrete. And then you can see off of Agency, there's some more HMA. And then down in the south part of town, there are some seal coat roads that happened this last year and that's, uh, intersection reconstruction. Um, and we were under, if you go to the monies section at the very bottom of the page, over to the right, there you go. We have a $1.4 million budgeted and then we have 134 estimated, 1.34, I can't speak with it on tonight, 1.374 million, uh, estimated and that includes engineering. So, we have a, of, a difference of 25,000 in the book plus. So, as you can see in the out years, we, we spend some of that extra money that we had saved. Um, it comes out to still being in the positive though. And, uh, inflation is already accounted for in all those numbers, so, so it may be a little bit different when they actually happen. So, if you go into fiscal year 20. Fiscal year 20, uh, tackles a couple of pretty good-sized stretches. Harrison Street from Summer all the way past Main Street, um, is a overlay project. And then you see us going up in the North Hill area, um, and doing some HMA up there. I think this is an all, this is an all HMA year. Um, and this is a year where we spent a little bit of the money that we had saved from the previous year. If you'd hit the next year, fiscal year 21. Uh, we, we kind of picked up where we left off in kind of the north part of town, um, with some of those streets. Some of there in pretty bad shape. And then we're also trying to tackle, um, Central. Uh, Central's a fairly wide street and it's in pretty bad shape. Um, unfortunately, you can't, this is about all we can get done for on that section. Um, I think it angular turns into fairly, it turns into concrete and it's in pretty good shape. Um, we're in conversation, there's a STBG grant application due here at the end of December. Um, we're debating between Central Avenue and then if you wanna hit the next year, we're working on Ninth or Madison. Nope, 2022. No, you were right, I was wrong. Sorry, I just, uh, Washington Street is probably the biggest project that we have going on. Uh, that is, I think that's STP funded. It's a, it's a grant funded, uh, road. Um, and then you have some, you have Hagaman. Um, and then you have a section on Division, which is a fairly short stint, but it was the, it was, it's some of the concrete, uh, where you have some of the panels that don't meet up very well. And we, we've done a lot of patchwork, so the ride's pretty rough. And we've also done a lot of work on Division east and west of there. So, we're kinda just going in there. It's a, it's a wide road, so it's not a whole lot of, of length, but it's quite a bit of concrete at the end of the day. Um, the, the Glendale-Morningside area, um, is kind of similar to what you saw as, along with Dill, is that the, the concrete is starting to show its age. Um, and you see a lot of patchwork in the, um, in the fault lines there between the two panels. If you'd hit the next year? This is the year that we're, we're talking about Madison Avenue, um, as a grant application. Um, as, similar to Central, it's, it's a fairly wide road for a lot of it at the, on the south half. Um, but that's also a fairly long stretch. So, um, we've done a lot of patchwork in-house, uh, to try and keep it so that the structure is okay. Uh, the ride is not very good though. Um, and then we go and attack, I think it's Nor, or Oak Street up north. Um, and then we also hit the, uh, is that Park Side or Park Avenue? Yep. And then I think we have one more year? Now that was it? I can review any of the conversations about that. I know it gets a little in-depth sometimes, but, um, we still have some seal coat roads that we're working on too that wasn't included in this conversation. Um, and then the projects that we have planned for next spring are not, you, you, we talked about Mount Pleasant Street and then the bridge and then, uh, Agency Street. Those aren't included in these monies. Um, those are different funding sources. So, uh, we have about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars worth of funding for this five-year road plan. So, I can answer any questions? Um, we use PCI data or the pavement condition index data as well as the, the average daily traffic load on the roads to, to understand how you choose what roads you need to do to try and get done. Obviously, we can't fix everything that we need to. I mean, there's still a lot of roads that need to be out there and get fixed, but we try to select the ones that made the most sense. So, I can answer any questions.
Only question I have is, I don't know if it's the right place to ask or anything, but where in the future is there any chance for Cascade Bridge? I mean, what year would that be or what?
I think from the conversations with Jim, we've talked about TIFF as the funding source.
Nope.
No? Okay, nevermind. That was a pretty quick no. I don't, I think we talked about 2024. I think it was around the conversation of TIFF. I just associated the two together. Sorry.
What year did you say that was?
2024 fiscal year.
2024 is about the first year that we can fit it in our bonding schedule and have it, have it not cause a significant impact on the levy. And so, it'll be a, it's not in the five-year plan yet, but that's the first spot where it could potentially fit within and, and make sense.
How much of this 1.4 per year is road use and how much of it is, uh, bonding?
What he has just shown up there, the majority of that, the 1.5 million annually is the bonding amount that we're using. Uh, the seal coat work that he didn't have is the 400,000 that comes out of the...
Road use tax?
Road use tax. Um, we do some other projects that have ended up getting funded out of road use tax. Where, well, for one, uh, we're gonna do cent, the, the bridge at Central.
Correct.
This next spring as well, and that's gonna be funded out of road use tax.
And you also budget about 150,000 in miscellaneous road use. Um, in the last, you know, 10 months, we've had to use quite a bit of that for some of the road work on like Patterson, or we will be using that rather, um, some of the unforeseen stuff.
We were at a point before the gas tax was approved, uh, the increase in the gas tax was approved, we had essentially no money coming out of road use tax. It was going towards projects. Uh, the gas tax increase brought in about 450,000 annually increased funding into the, into the road use tax fund. And that's essentially what we've been using to do the seal coats and are looking to do as we move on in the next few years as well.
And unfortunately, I would, right as I got in here, I realized I forgot my seal coat map. Um, we have two years more remaining on that and we chose those outside of the MSL sewer separation area. Um, I'll bring that map or I'll send it to you in an email to show which, which roads are remaining on the seal coat list. But there's still quite a few left, um, in the MSL sewer separation area that will be taken care of through that work.
Thank you.
Are we, you know what, I'm not even gonna ask you now, Nick. Uh, it's something I can talk to you later. Uh, Mr. Kreitzer?
I'll have to repeat the name and address. Do you know who I am?
Yes, please. I'd like to know where you live.
Robert Kreitzer, 810 North Fifth. Uh, Mr. MacGyver, uh, a lot of people ask me about the, um, the Mount Pleasant Bridge and that's gonna be worked on next year.
Hey, Robert, cameras, cameras facing this way. We wanna see your face, man.
I would like to speak to the person.
Don't worry about him. Don't worry about him.
The Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, uh, top and bottom, it's looking kinda grungy and that's in the works for us to, to repair that, correct?
We have that, actually, it's in the design, 80, 80% designed complete? How far, percentage design done? You're getting pretty close to it. Cause we're, we're looking to go out to bid over this, over the winter and then begin construction in March-ish on, uh, the replacement of that bridge.
Okay. Is it gonna be a brand-new bridge or really?
Yeah, brand-new bridge. That's about a five and a half million dollar overall project.
So, it, it wasn't worth fixing, huh? You just start from scratch?
You get to a point where life expectancy, you get a better bang for your buck out at doing a complete redo on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Rosales Olmos, 102 Melrose Court. I'm seeing a lot of money being put out there to be spent on roads. That, that's what he's proposing. What's wrong with Flint Hills Roads? What's wrong with that drive, Flint Hill Drive?
What do you, what do you?
He said the first road he had mentioned was they were gonna be fixed in Flint Hill Drive.
What's the, okay?
The question is what's wrong with the road? What is wrong with it to make it like, to have to be fixed right away? I don't understand.
Well, like you said, they have a grading scale they use to evaluate roads.
People are going down that road at 60, 70 miles an hour every day. I mean, there's no potholes in it. I mean, if you could race down the road that fast, I mean, let's leave the potholes.
Well, we need to have a police officer sitting there to, uh, to make sure we get some of that money then. That'll slow them down.
Exactly. But anyway, they can't be there if there's not enough of them either. You know, that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, the money, if, we see all this money going out, going out, going out. I mean, everybody's proposing money.
Money's gotta, money's gotta go out on roads, Rebecca. That's one thing that...
It sure does, but the houses over there, there's, most of them are vacant. Most of them are rundown and vacant. I mean, there's, it's hard. You know, I know where you guys are coming from too, but I mean, we can't be spending money on an area that's really high in crime. And I mean, it's just, it's dilapidated. I mean, I think first, get these yards and houses fixed up and get people in there.
See, and we, that's not the, we can't look at, that is our criteria of, you know, of if we do the roads. A city's almost like, well, it is kinda. A city's like a house. It's a great big huge house. And just because, you know, the closet's only getting used during special, special occasions, it's still getting used, so you still gotta put the hooks up in there, whatever. That's a bad analogy. It was horrible. But the bottom line is, the bottom line is, we do have a criteria that we do set up and all the roads, we have to, all the roads have to be touched up. All the roads have to be...
We'd be able to put like speed bumps and removable speed bumps. Some of that, that road is, I'm serious, it's like a racetrack over there. I mean, I just watched three kids almost get run over the other day.
Our police chief, he's sitting in the back and he hears everything. So, I guarantee ya, I, I bet ya there'll be some police cars with some speech...
But it's hard for them. I mean, I, I'm not saying they're not doing their job because they are. You know, every time I've called them, they were out there right away. They took reports, they had, they did what they had to do. But it's like when, you can't be everywhere at once with only four on at a time in most cases in a shift. That's, that's a lot of people here. You know, so it makes it hard to have one sitting there. And how about like those speed signs, instead of fixing, you know, redoing the whole road, why don't they put one of those strobe light speed signs to catch them? I mean, something. Can we do something else? I mean...
That's something that I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I talk to the chief about that. But as far as the, as far as the roads go though, we, we get a, we have a process that they go through. They grade them and...
Right. No, and I understand that too. I'm just saying...
And as we get to that and when it comes up, you know, it doesn't matter if it's a good neighborhood or bad.
It's very dangerous. I say pull out, leave it dirt, you know, these people won't be going 60. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but.
Thank you, Rebecca. Mr. Shanahan, my favorite jacket. Come on down.
Leon Shanahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Just a question, no comment. What are we getting as far as, is the road use tax still a per capita distribution that we get? What are we doing on that now? How much do we get?
I don't even remember the formula. It's around $3 million annually. Covers our street lighting, uh, street, taking care of the streetlights. You have a fairly significant budget with that snowplow and your, and your staffing is primarily what it's covering for costs within a street fund. Although, as Nick mentioned, a couple of hundred thousand towards base repairs and then the seal coat work that we do.
So, really over the years, even though we got that 10-cent gasoline increase, really hasn't gone up that much?
That was the, the, the only significant change that there has been through the years, over the last 20 years. And that was one of the reasons why that was, when you get to a tax increase, one of the few that's been, um, seen significant favor on a statewide basis.
Thank you.
I mean, not complete favor, but...
So, we're good? We can put this to bed? Counsel? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Number eight?
Here I have a resolution of the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, affirming its support of the federal historic tax credit program.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
This is, uh, requesting, uh, Steve Prevert, uh, maybe able to come up and talk. Uh, discussions at the federal level of eliminating the federal historic tax credit program that has, uh, seen a lot of, uh, impact in our downtown and our community. Um, some of the buildings that have utilized this, uh, uh, tax credit, that may not have happened otherwise include the hedge building at 401 Jefferson, the Jones Block 404 Jefferson, uh, the Lyman Cooks Block Building 400 Jefferson, First United Methodist Church at 421 Washington, John Bayes Company 416 Jefferson, which is the law of the former J.C. Bill, J.C. Penny Building at 500 Jefferson, uh, and the historic Tamaa Project at 310 Jefferson and, uh, many others. Um, this is a tax credit, especially in Iowa and some of the older... This is a tax credit, especially in Iowa and some of the older communities, that has a good, or a great impact on whether some projects move forward and the redevelopment of a lot of projects, especially in our downtown. This is something that some of the possible development that has been discussed in the recent past would be utilizing as well, so it is seen as important for our continued success in our downtown and our community.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? Mr. Frevert, the best dancer Burlington has ever put out.
Well, we haven't seen you dance in a while.
Because I can't dance, Mr. Frevert.
Steve Frevert with Downtown Partners. Eric summed it up pretty well. I took a look at the National Trust website earlier. The value of at least not including the TAMA or the 500 Jefferson project, 13.5 million dollars in investment. I have a lot of reason to believe that a lot of that would not have taken place without federal tax credit. It is, unlike perhaps not every federal program, this is a tax credit that returns more money to the Treasury than it costs. Independent study commissioned by the National Park Service showed that, from its inception in 1978, $25.2 billion in federal tax credits generated more than $29.8 billion in federal tax revenue. So, as Eric said, this is, this is a crucial tool for a lot of these, especially major projects, commercial rehab projects that we see going on. It's a 20% credit on federal taxes owed. It's not a gimme, it's not a check that's handed to you or a grant at the beginning. The developers who are doing this work, they have to put the money into it to get that 20% out of it. And a lot of times even that is syndicated, so other people are able to use that full This is, this is a really critical tool for downtown development and development in historic buildings across this country. I also have reason to believe that the state tax credit is going to be looked at pretty closely in the coming months. Between the two of those, they've been the bulk of why we've seen such growth in downtown Burlington. So, I think it's really important to see the council support this resolution, also encourage individuals listening or here in the audience to contact our federal legislators, Senator Grassley, Senator Ernst, Congressman Lobzak, and let them know how important this is for our community.
Thank you, sir.
You know, only other note there I'd make, and the resolution talks about, there's over 500,000 square feet of vacant or underutilized space in downtown Burlington. That's a tremendous amount of space that still could be redeveloped and put into more better use, higher value use. So, we still have, we've seen a lot of growth in the last few years, but we still have a lot of way to go.
I, in fact, sent an email out to Johnny Ernst, you know, telling her about all this great growth we've had because of this tax credit, and also invited her down to come check it out. You know, every email and call that they get is just more encouragement for them to keep it. So, I encourage everyone to do all that they can, because this is vital for, not only for Burlington, but for everywhere across the United States.
You know, I have a lot of hands-on experience with this tax credit, and it's not just important for Burlington, it is all through the United States. And I think if you look back in all the years, if that credit hadn't been there, I think there are a lot of projects that wouldn't have gotten done. The other thing, projects are developed to a higher standard because of the tax credits. There, you know, there's, you have to bring your buildings to a certain level that if you just go out and develop a building, you may not do that. You know, you're saving historic, this historic integrity of the building, your plumbing, all these things have to be at a higher standard. And if this goes away, I can just pretty well guarantee you there won't be more development downtown, because we have big buildings and the Iowa tax credit and the federal tax credits, these developers that are, look at these bigger buildings, if they can't use those, they probably can't make it work. It's just, it's just that big. And, and we need out-of-town money to develop these buildings, because there's not enough people in this town that can afford to save these buildings. And if they don't start getting redeveloped, we're, every year, we're going to lose more and more of them. And I think it's really important to us as a city in our downtown to save these buildings and find viable use for them. That's the other thing with the tax credit, it has to be income-producing. So, when the building is done, it has to be income-producing. It's just not like it's saving a house or just a building that's going to sit there. It's got to be producing income. So, it's very important. So, anybody that can write a letter or do anything, you really need to do it.
Anything else? Rose Kendall, let's take a vote.
Did you notice the editorial comment that Steve got in there? Did you notice that?
Uh-uh.
I was the only one that caught that?
No. Yeah, I mean, apparently, you going to share with us or leave a second?
Go ahead.
You rascal. All right, go ahead.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Pay attention to detail. All right.
Your Honor, I move the approval of a contract for services for Geon Forestry, Inc., for timber listing and timber sale on Otter Island.
Moved in second. Mr. Scott? Come down here to speak for the trees?
Tim Scott, save everything. Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th Street. I thought I would do you a favor and bring, take this off the consent agenda. If you'll recall, it was just a few short months ago that we took some action on Otter Island, and their biggest upset was the fact that it was on the consent agenda. And this was dealing with Otter Island, and it's on the consent agenda, so I took off the consent agenda for them. The other thing that I want to mention is, a very good friend of mine has some acreage west of here, not far. And he had his, his land timbered, and they took down 180 trees, and they topped those trees. He didn't think, when they said they were going to top the trees, that it would be all that big a deal. Some of those tops measured over 20 foot long. The trees might have been 28, 30 feet tall, tipped the heart of the tree, eight to 10 feet. They left the rest of it lying. Now, one of the concerns, one of the concerns that have been brought up over and over again by the folks that leased from us on Otter Island is the tops of the trees and what it, what it does to them. I think when you negotiate the contract, that you might add that, you know, it's too expensive to take those, take all those tops off there, but cut them to a manageable size. Ask that they be placed in such a fashion that the folks on the island might be able to use them and cut them up for firewood, but they, you know, if you've got a 20 or 25-foot top laying there, that's difficult for one, one person and a, and a hand saw to cut up. I would, that was the only thing I wanted to bring up, is that if you, if it wasn't brought off now, it'd be brought up in the future.
Yeah, and it has been. I asked that question, remember? We talked about this at the work session. Thank you, Tim.
Nothing else? What, anybody else from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye.
Anderson. Aye.
Your Honor, I move the approval of an engineering service agreement between the City of Burlington and Vinsor and Kim, Inc. of Moline for professional engineering services for Phase Six of the flood mitigation project in the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
I guess I'm kind of lost in all the different phases. What part of the flood mitigation project is Phase Six?
Phase Six is like Phase Two. It's great that we have these numbers, but they-- And the, and the reason they do the, the different numbers, the earlier phases are C S O work primarily that we got to count as part of our match towards the project. But this phase is primarily the addition of two pump stations, the bulk of the cost that's listed in, in the tentative cost estimate in the sheets here.
Now, this is pump stations for the sewers?
For, they'll be on the backside of the flood wall, so as you, if you have any water that, either through seepage, or if you have a rain event, to be able to pump the water over.
All right.
You good?
Yep.
Any other questions from the audience, anybody? Okay. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Anderson.
Aye.
Your Honor, I move the approval of a contract for real estate services for Terrace Real Estate Group, LLC, for marketing and selling the Burlington Police Department facility located at 424 North Third Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Who pulled that one? Leon?
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th. My question's why? Why are we marketing the building? I thought we, we had taken out $700,000 loan to stabilize that building and then decided against it, put it, put that money into a new facility. That's, I can't imagine it's worth saving, but when it's, when it's going to be $700,000 to, just to stabilize it, why aren't we looking at demolition of that building?
I think we have an interested, possibly--
We might have someone who's interested in the property, but regardless, as it's marketed, Jesse's talked about listing it, at least initially at a, at 100,000. It may be that you have an interested party, as we've had some discussions with Jesse, that may ultimately decide to demo it in conjunction with another project. Or, or the other part is, you may have somebody who's looking to redevelop the existing building. One of the things Jesse did want in that regard was a copy of the report from Klingner that we had. I don't know if you've gotten that or not, but just to see what we were looking at when we had Klingner do that and what was going to cost 700,000. The 700,000 that Klingner talked about, that, that wasn't even the, I mean, that was kind of a base level of support. That has much more significant renovation costs if you're going to truly do what needs done there. It may end up, Tim, that even if we sell it, it'll end up being one that is ultimately demolished.
If we've got somebody wanting to do that, make the price right so it goes quick.
You got that right. Thank you, Tim.
Larry Williams, 15 Mason Lane. My question would be the same as Tim's. Why, when we started out with the new police department building, the thing was we were going to demolish it, make a parking lot, and we're looking for parking lot space. That's a good spot for it. The second concern, biggest concern I have personally is, I don't want to see the city sell something, get sued for it, or be like the high school up there, sit there for years and nothing happens, and the police have to take care of vandalism, or somebody getting in there and the thing falls down on them. So, I think, you know, if you made up your mind you're going to sell it, you're going to sell it. But they should have a very short-term listing, like three months or something to sell it, and make sure that when the settlement agreement is made, that the city has no liability for that property in any way. Because when I sell a home, and I sold seven or eight of them in my lifetime, two of them I put new furnace and air conditioner, one I put air conditioner and furnace and roof on it, and I've always had the electrician and plumbers go through and bring the house up to spec. And selling that thing is selling a horse with no teeth and a swayback and broken leg. There's no rendering works to take them to anymore, so--
You're really helping us sell this building.
If they want to come in there and rehab that building, I would make sure that gentleman over there is happy with what they're going to do before they use it.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Williams. Anybody else from the audience? All right. Counsel? Kathleen?
Davidson.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Yes, please.
Wilson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
All right. This brings us to the end of our meeting. If there is something that we have not touched on tonight that you wanted to make sure that we brought up, Snake Alley District, come on down.
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. Couple things. One is that it's interesting to me that so many of the things that were discussed tonight involved the long-term, long-term prognosis for Burlington. And as you all know, I'm an advocate of the 25-year plan, and it's a highly underutilized tool, is, is a basis for making all of your decisions about even approving Platts, about selling properties to adjacent houses. The question that I would put forward to the council is, have you evaluated that against the long-term goals and the 25-year plan for the city? Because the impact, even of, of selling a plot of land to an adjacent homeowner, has long-term implications for the tax base for the city. And, and so, rather than making these decisions based on the shoot-from-the-hip or, or the heat of the moment or the thought of the day, all of those things should play into your long-term plan. And, and unfortunately, we're, we're fairly amiss when it comes to utilizing our, our long-term plan and making those decisions. But that's really not why I came here tonight.
Parking.
The reason I came here tonight is to talk to you about parking in downtown. I had addressed the council briefly a couple weeks ago about, about the change in the parking plan for downtown. And what I did is I submitted your email to all of you and Mr. Frenault, a concept for dealing with downtown parking. And what the plan that I submitted addressed was the three goals that were put forward by the city in all of the parking commission meetings. Adequate parking for people who live downtown, adequate parking for people who work downtown, and adequate parking for people who, who shop downtown. And the unwritten goal was, was retention of the revenue as it relates to lease parking, which is, which is a huge issue for downtown, primarily because of the perception that it creates in regard to the availability of, of parking. And when we look at the parking lots, surface lots downtown, they sit empty so much of the time, and that was addressed in the parking study. But the solution that, that was put forward didn't address or resolve any of those issues. And in fact, my concern is that this concept of daytime parking and nighttime parking, lease parking, non-lease parking, partially, part-of-the-day lease parking, and, and spots that are always available, will only further the confusion on the part of people who have to shop downtown. And those lots are going to continue to sit empty. In the, in the process that, that we went through, one of the suggestions that I had made was based on the belief that there's no parking downtown, and that was to make it all free. Put three-hour parking on all the surface lots and just let it go. It wasn't well-received, partially because of the fact that some of the lots are privately held, and I recommended that we include those in the free parking downtown experiment. But at the same time, it also reduced the revenues to the city because of the monies collected through the, through the lease spaces. The proposal that I put forward maintains the 8250 in revenue for the city, for all of the people who need to be able to leave their vehicles for an extended period of time during the day. It also generated additional revenue for people who would prepay in advance for kind of a go-free parking ticket violation removal process. That's guaranteed revenue, as opposed to anyone's guess as to whether you get the revenue or not. But most importantly, what the, what the plan puts forward is a concept that parking is available. If a spot is open, you can use it. And it changes the, the parking lots to, to three-hour parking. And, and basically, anyone who goes downtown, much like an open space on the street, can use that spot. So it, it, it removes the perception that there's no parking from downtown, which I believe is the biggest problem we have. It maintains the revenue that the city gets, um, from the 8250, which wasn't a part of the formal, um, goals of the, of the parking study, but, um, but it addresses that anyway. At the same time, for people who need to park their car in the morning and leave it throughout the day who work downtown, they're able to do so. For people who live downtown, they can park in any spot that's open during those hours, after the prime hours of the day, and not worry about parking. It also gives, uh, gives them an option to manage their costs and not get caught with an unexpected parking ticket, because one day, uh, they had to stay home from work. Maybe their cat was sick, or, or, you know, for some reason they had to, they had to leave their car there, or something happened and they were away. And so, um, they, they're given some relief from that. And for people who are shopping downtown, because every spot down there is available, they can feel free to park at, at any time in any spot that's available. So what I tried to do was to take the goals that were announced in the, in the parking study, and at the meetings that were held afterwards, and put forward a plan that addressed those issues. And took away the, what I considered to be more of a punishment rather than an incentive for improving parking downtown. And I, and I've sent that all, all to you on email, and I was hoping to get some feedback or thoughts. Mr. Davidson did send me an email back, um, you know, thanking me for the effort. But I really don't know where the council stands on that. And we'd really like to get some feedback and thoughts, and, uh, and find out, how do we, how do we get this, this project moving forward? Now, wrapped around all of that is this concept of the Snake Alley District. What, uh, one of the things that we've talked about in parking is that if you took the mall in West Burlington and laid it over downtown, you would cover all of downtown. And people walk farther to shop in the mall than they ever do to park downtown. So, in our discussions, um, over the last five years about branding downtown, one of the things that, that came up in the discussion was being able to create a, a sentiment that you are actually where you need to be. You are in the Snake Alley District. It is our, um, contrary to Mr. Fleming, your son's comment about the river being our greatest asset, I believe that our greatest asset actually is Snake Alley. Because much like everyone has a Jefferson Street, or a Main Street, or a historic district, there are also many, many communities that have, uh, riverfront property. What they don't have is the Snake Alley. So it's a very unique geographical feature that's unique to us. And what we can do with the, with the concept of the, of the Snake Alley District is to give people the feeling that they are where they need to be. And what that does is bring your peripheral parking locations, like in front of the auditorium, like the lot next to the, near the police station, like the one behind the, um, the appliance store, all into the district. And so if people feel that they have arrived within the district, then they're not walking too far to get to their shopping locations. At the same time, we are maintaining all of the storefront parking, and we are opening up all of the surface lot parking as well. So I'm, I'm open to criticism. If there's a part of this plan that, that has a hole in it, I, I'm open to hear that. I've spent a lot of time analyzing it and trying to figure out, and, and I don't see it. But the formation of a Snake Alley District with the three-hour surface parking lots, with the tags for 8250 that assures people who have to park over an extended period downtown, all come together into a very good benefit for those of us who, who run businesses downtown. And with that, I would love to hear some feedback.
We can't address that tonight because it wasn't on the agenda from, from behind the chairs. But already, you know, when you broke it down, Mary already told you how I felt about it. So you know, and I still feel the same way. I'll leave it at that, but-
Right. So, so I, I'm not a, I'm not a politician by any stretch. What's the process for getting this into your discussion?
If the council want to put it on as a discussion topic, you certainly can.
I've got no problem with putting it on for a discussion item. Dude, I think it's a great idea. I don't like all your ideas. But this one, I love, my friend. I do.
All right. Well, I'll let it go at that, then. You guys can do what you, do what you do.
Thank you, Eric.
Anything we have not covered? Anyone that's name is not Leon Shaheen? Come on, Morax. We'll, we'll get you, Leon. We'll get you here. Just one second, sir.
Tim Scott, 2017 South Fifteenth. I talked with the mayor about this. There's, uh, four parking spots, five parking spots, maybe six, that are designated 30-minute parking spots on the, um, side of City Hall. And with great frequency, there is a nuisance department vehicle that's parked in that 30-minute spot, way longer than 30 minutes. Sometimes all day, sometimes a couple days at a time. I spend an awful lot of time downtown. I, I think it's an insult, I take it there. That's being done. That, uh, it, it gives the impression to the people that we don't care about customer service because we're taking up a customer service parking spot. Somebody needs to get in and get out of City Hall to, to do business in a short period of time, taking up those parking spot, taking up that parking spot. It's just poor customer service. And, uh, I, I would, uh, hope that as a council, you would see that and, uh, address it. I know it's not a big issue, but, um, I know that I ask my employees not to park in, on Jefferson Street, period. They have parking lots in the back of my other building. And, uh, that's, uh, that's where they park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Kreitzer?
Robert Kreitzer, 10 North Fifth. Want to end it on something positive. Uh, we got some street lights up on Valley and Melrose Court. And, uh, I don't think we can have too many lights, and I think that's an awesome thing.
Right on.
If I can make a suggestion, if we can get more lights where there's hotspots for crime, or you get multiple calls to a certain area. I know the police force is taxed pretty heavily right now as far as personnel and, and getting people out. So I, I'd like to see more lights where we need them. Uh, I think that's a wonderful idea. I know that some of the concerns people have, you know, you don't wanna walk in certain neighborhoods. I lived on South 12th, uh, kinda where we, where you were at before. When it got dark, I didn't walk to Hy-Vee. I was two blocks from it. I would drive, just because I didn't wanna walk in the dark to Hy-Vee, two blocks away. You know I run. I run all over the place. You see me all over town. I wasn't gonna walk to Hy-Vee when it was two blocks away, in the dark. During the day, I'm fine. So, uh, if it was lit up, I'd be more comfortable with that. And I, I think that's a wonderful thing. And again, uh, I think it's awesome that, Becky, you mentioned when Rebecca, you know, she says something about having more lights. You guys acted on that promptly. I don't think she's lived in Burlington very long, and you, you responded quickly and gave her what she wanted. So I think that's amazing. And, uh, you know, I, I wrote about it, but I, I do think you're listening. And, um, I don't, I don't really have any complaints, yet. But if, if I do, I'll let you know. But, uh, I think you guys are doing great, so I appreciate you. And, yes, have a good night.
Thank you, Rob.
Hey, and just, just for the record, if you disagree with what we do, Robert, as long as you come down in the manner that you've been coming down in, alrighty then. Alrighty then.
I just would just point out, and this is something that we've talked about internally, staff-wise. We spend a quarter million dollars a year on streetlights, and it's pretty easy to put them in. And it's, I mean, there's a lot of locations that you can look at and say that there's a, a need. But it's very hard to get them out once you put them in. And the cost continues over time. And it adds up very quickly. And you can look, there are, you can double the cost of our streetlight program fairly quickly. And that is ongoing cost that is coming out of road use tax. And every dollar you spend on that is a, one dollar less you spend, you spend on streets themselves. So make sure you keep it in perspective and balance out those things. There is a cost to what you're, what you do as you consider each of these. And it needs to be thought through and, and weighed out.
But I, I think, too, individuals can get their own lights and-
Correct. And that's-
For that cost, I mean, if you're, if it's dark by your house, I, I would certainly consider it.
And just for the record, just so that, 'cause I don't want, uh, I don't want this to go past. Chief's been lighting up, since I've been on the council, there's been several different areas, troubled areas, and stuff like that. I mean, there's nothing that we haven't thought about. We've been lighting up Burlington. But again, um, we can't, we can't light everything up. Otherwise, uh, you'll have some pasty people like Jim looking like me, because, uh, it'll be, be like a tanning bed around here, so. But anyways, okay, disregard what I just said. Turn that off. But you guys get the, you guys get the point, so. Everybody's tonight, then? Mr. Shaheen?
Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I still have a lot of concerns about the flood mitigation project. In your work session, uh, there was a discussion about the pilings having to be driven further than what was anticipated. If people would've done their homework on that, you would know that beneath the channel of Mississippi that we see today is a buried channel carved into the bedrock. You've got, and the further north you go, the more surprises you're likely to find on the flood wall. I think the whole flood wall project is an edict being driven by the Chamber of Commerce, not so much by what really needs to be done. I'm more confident with the estimate I set that's gonna cost you on that by the time you're done with flood wall, cost overruns, tax incentives for hotels, convention centers, restaurants that you don't need. You're talking a price tag of $100 million. In a town where you collect, I don't know, the number is around $13 million a year in property tax, that's a pretty steep price. Now, I understand it's being financed by sales tax increment financing. If your population is declining, that increment might become an increment.
Thank you, sir. Are we good?
I just wanted to interrupt you one more time. This is Becky's last trip?
I don't know. Is it this one or next week?
No, it's not this one. This wouldn't be the last one.
Should be. I just wanted to thank Becky for her service. And Jim won't be here much longer. And, uh-
Are you trying to bring me down tonight? What is your problem? Go ahead.
If I say anything nice to you, you'll just see the swelled head.
That's true.
But I would like to thank all of you for your dedication. It's a tough job. I've seen a lot of it in miserable, like, the city staff. We've, uh, we've reduced them in places and pushed them hard in others. And they've all responded very well. And I don't think they get enough credit. One of them might be overpaid, but the rest of them do a really good job. But thank you, one and all, for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right. All right. Mr. Tisland? No shade, November?
Yep. We had our Brownfield meeting this morning, talking to our consultants about a follow-up meeting on the catalyst sites. Uh, and they just got back to us this afternoon, looking to see if Tuesday, November 21st, would work for a joint, another joint meeting, to talk about the catalyst sites. Now, that's coming up soon, but I'll also email the check as well. We're also wanting to discuss, uh, during that same time period with the Planning Commission Conference Plan Review and Update. So spend a little bit of time on that, and then talk about the catalyst site. So I'll send an email and see if that works, or if there's a certain time that works for everyone.
Absolutely. So, this weekend, on the 11th, excuse me, Saturday, is the Kid Symphony, which is at Edward Stone, I believe, this year? Is that correct? Is it at the Capitol? I, I don't believe it is this year. I think they've changed it to Edward Stone, so don't get confused. And somebody double-check real quick, and then... Anyway, that's from four, it starts at four. So that should be a good one for, you know, bringing all, all the kiddos. And then, of course, on Sunday is the holiday tail now. Going on, getting some shopping done downtown, hopefully. Starts at noon. Get out there and visit all our wonderful shops and restaurants. That's it for now, unless I get a correction on the location.
Okay. That's it for now. She gets a correction on the location.
Well, number one vote tomorrow. Because we have some good candidates running, and it's important to get good people up here. And I wasn't absolutely sure if it was tonight or the next night because she said the auditor had to confirm the votes. If it's tonight, then I wanna say thank you. I've enjoyed being back on here for a few weeks. And it's always a pleasure to have the highest regard for our city staff. That's probably the number-one reason I wanted to do it. And, uh, and, and I have high regards for the whole city of Burlington. Love this city. So thanks.
Well said. This isn't your last week, so I'm not gonna say goodbye to you and all that good stuff. We'll wait till-
We don't know if it is, is it-
Yes, we do. We do know.
As long as they have certified results back.
It could be.
And it, you most likely will, but you might not.
So I-
But it's a work session next time, anyways.
Yeah, depends on when we get certified results back. And I, I just don't know how long that'll take. But you, you're here until that is done. I would think that, uh, the highest vote getter would be in your spot by the next regular session.
Yes.
Okay. Well, anyways, fair or bad news. I wanna say this, yes, uh, get out and vote, get out and vote. People, I'm gonna say this again. You know, we know how many people are in Burlington. We know how many people live here. And we get the numbers on how many people vote, so. Don't just bark about it later. Get out and actually do something about it. So, uh, I, I'd love to see those numbers, um, very, very high for people out there getting their voice heard. Uh, again, I wanna, uh, say, Becky, thank you for stepping up. You're rock star status, and we appreciate you. We do. And, uh, you've got something to say, and, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it. You, we'll deal with that later when it's time. But you know what I think about you, and I haven't appreciated you enough. Well, yeah, we'll go there later, but, um, uh, what was the other thing? Oh, yes. My, if I were mayor, I just wanna do this, and then I'm done. We, we had our If I Were Mayor Award winner, Gabriella Deary. Um, she's actually the daughter of Brad Deary, and she made, she did such a, did such a great job. And she was the winner. Anyways, we got a chance to go visit her at Notre Dame, and, uh, we ate some cookies and all that good stuff. But I just wanted to read just a little, just a little excerpt, if you don't mind. Says, "If I were mayor, I'd be a good steward with the public's money to provide essential services that residents come to expect. My goal would be to build a community that contributes to residents' quality of life and encourages young adults to return, so the city can continue to thrive. It is important to provide amenities that help our citizens stay active, have fun, get involved, feel welcome, and remain safe." And that's just the first paragraph. Wasn't that awesome, Rose? So, anyways, I don't know if she's watching or not. But let somebody, let, somebody let her know. If you, if you go to school, or if you're, if you teach at Notre Dame, or what have you. Gabriella Deary, uh, fantastic. If I was to get up and she was to sit in this seat, we'd be in good hands. So, uh, anyways, just wanna thank her and for everybody that did participate in that. Jim Davidson?
You're a valuable asset, so thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
My second note was to vote, and someone's already said that. So hopefully you all out there have taken time to pray and figure out who you should vote for. And get out there and do it. And, um, I'm available on Wednesday for KBR.
I'll go with you, my friend.
We're gonna do it?
Yep.
Do you wanna do it?
I love that guy.
Chief, I would like to talk to you after we're done here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just ask people to vote tomorrow. And nice of you to be here tonight. Thank you.
Jim Davidson? Assistant City Manager? 2017 MacGyver Award winner.
I just wanted to give you an update on a couple of the projects we have wrapping up here yet this fall. Agency Street, the center turn lane got poured last week. They should be striping tomorrow. Uh, they have to do some, uh, connection with some asphalt there. But I would say by the end of the week, you should see it, uh, open back up. So the frontage road will likely, will stay in red flash until next spring, when, before we start working on it. Um, West Burlington Avenue and Agency will go into a timed setup because we took out the, uh, the loops that were on that side, so it won't work the way it did before. But it'll be timed similarly to the way it functioned in the past. Jefferson Street is wrapped up. Uh, just a couple little more short pours. And then you'll see, see that open back up, so.
And the lights come back on?
Yeah. Yeah, see, they were working on some electricity today, so it's all in the same circuit, so it shut down, I think, a couple blocks worth of lights, but should be back up here this week.
Good.
So, yeah. Thanks.
Jim?
That's it.
We're good to go? You know, normally, once we come back to, once we come back to the council, that means that it's over with for comments, but you know what? I'm going to make an exception for you, Rose.
Thank you. Rose Kendall, 621 Barrett Street, Burlington, and our group came down tonight to observe what you guys do, so we can report back to our group. And it was very interesting, and we thank you for your service, and God bless, and yes, vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose, thank you, and thank you guys for coming down. Okay, there's no-
I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Clemmie?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, sir.